Good evening. The Menifee City Council is re-adjourned from closed session at time 7:02. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilmember August, Councilmember Furman, Councilmember Denver, Deputy Mayor Edgerton, and Mayor Mann.
Here.
Thank you.
And for our indication this evening Pastor Jeff Johnson from Calvary Hills Church.
Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Well, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, again, thank you for the opportunity. It's a privilege to be here. I'll go down and pray. Dear Heavenly Father, God, we just lift up this meeting to you. I lift up each one of these councilmembers, all those that are making decisions in this place, that you would give them wisdom and discernment. God, that you would give them the heart for this city that would represent the residents of this city. God, we pray for our beautiful city, that you bless us all with just pray your prosperity, your blessing upon it. Lift up, God, all those that protect this city. Lord, our public servants, I just pray that you would protect them and guide them, Lord. And I just pray once again that you would guide this meeting. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Jeff. And Councilmember Denver, would you lead us in?
If you'd all join me, please, in saluting our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. And before presentations, City Attorney, we have, do we have any reports out of our closed sessions from earlier this evening?
Yes, we do. There was a closed session that was held at 4:00 PM regarding two matters of consideration, a potential initiation of litigation. In following the discussion in closed session, on a motion by, excuse me, Mayor, Deputy Mayor Edgerton, and a second by Councilmember August, the City Council directed that all code enforcement actions relating to the Wood nickel Ranch, excuse me, proceed expeditiously to obtain full compliance, and that civil litigation is authorized if necessary. On another motion, also by Deputy Mayor Edgerton, seconded by Councilmember August, and the vote on the first one, my way, was four to nothing, and also the second one, four to nothing, the City District Council directed the City Attorney to file a formal complaint with the District Attorney and the Fair Political Practices Commission regarding apparent violations of the Conflict of Interest laws by Councilmember Furman related to his economic interests.
Thank you very much, Madam Attorney. And next on the agenda, we, oh, we have another?
Wait, wait, wait. Two more.
All right.
At 5:30, the Council reconvened in closed session with regard to two other matters, one of which was the written claim from a former employee. There was no reportable action on that claim, and also to confer with legal counsel, actually, and to consider evaluation of the position of City Manager, and again, there was no reportable action.
Thank you, Mrs. Biggs. Onto presentations, and if the Council would join me up front, we have two presentations to make tonight.
Thank you, Charles.
And if Bonnie Heosch and Pat Rehneer join us up front, and any other members of the Daughters of the American Revolution, come on up.
Whack her in the head.
Good evening. How are you? Welcome.
Thank you.
Nice to have you in here this evening. And as a son of the American Revolution, my generation nine great-grandfather is a certified patriot, so, welcome. Thank you very much for coming. We have a proclamation for you. Please face the audience. The City of Menifee Proclamation, whereas it is the privilege and duty of the American people to commemorate the 226th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America with appropriate ceremonies and activities, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week, whereas the City Council of the City of Menifee hereby proclaims the week of September 17th through the 23rd, 2013, as Constitution Week in the City of Menifee, and urges all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves. Signed, all the members of the City Council. Congratulations, ladies. And come on up here for a picture. We'll take, come on up.
I'm kind of short, so I can't quite.
In front of Greg, he's shorty.
Do we have a, there we go. Excellent, and one more?
One more.
Excellent, you have the floor.
Mayor Mann, councilmembers, the Lusannea chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution proudly receives this proclamation honoring the 226th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution. The first resolution to observe Constitution Week was made on June 14th, 1955, by then-California Senator William Nolan. The tradition of celebrating the Constitution was started many years ago by the Daughters of the American Revolution. The aims of this celebration for our foundational document are, one, to emphasize citizens' responsibilities for protecting and defending the Constitution to preserve it for our posterity; two, to inform the people that the Constitution is the basis for America's great heritage and the foundation for our way of life; and three, to encourage the study of the historical events which led to the framing of the Constitution in September of 1787. We thank you for sending this important message about Constitution Week to the citizens of Menifee.
Congratulations. 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 Good job. Thank you so much. If you have not done so, you know, you can trace your heritage back, and it's really great to get into one of the organizations, a son or daughter of the American Revolution. It's quite, quite unique. Chief Deputy Hill, would you please come join us up front? Tonight, we have an opportunity to say farewell to our very own now-Chief Deputy John Hill, the former captain of the Paris Police Station, as well as our Chief of Police for the last two and a half years. We're very fortunate to have had a leader such as John Hill in our city, taking care of business, making our streets safe for all of us, and leading the Paris Station, as well as Canyon Lake, the City of Paris, the City of Menifee, and all the unincorporated areas. And it is our distinct honor collectively, John, to recognize you for your effort and to congratulate you for your service to the City of Menifee, and on your well-deserved promotion to Chief Deputy in Riverside County. Congratulations to you, sir. So you've got the mic, right? You want to say a couple of words?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank the Mayor and the City Council for the continued support for the Police Department. I can tell you that public safety here in the City of Menifee is the top priority of our elected leaders here, and we do appreciate that. I can tell you that out of all the things that I've done in my life, serving as your police chief for the last couple of years has been one of the greatest honors of my life. I do appreciate the opportunity. I do appreciate being welcomed and adopted into the Menifee family here, and I can tell you that you're going to be in good hands with Captain Mike Judge. He's going to be your new police chief. He's standing in the back of the room right now, and he's a 25-year veteran of law enforcement. And anyway, I would really like to say thank you again for allowing me to be here. It's been an honor, and if there's anything else that we can ever do for you, Mike will be here for you, but you're always welcome to reach out to me as well. Thank you.
And for those of you who have not met him, Captain Mike Judge, our new Chief of Police, welcome aboard, sir. We know that you'll follow in the footsteps of the Chief Deputy soon. So congratulations to both of you, and welcome. Thank you. All right, on to the business.
Sir, that takes us to approval of meeting minutes from the fourth of September.
I believe we have another presentation, don't we?
I am so sorry.
That would be a presentation of?
The.
The Senior Citizen Ad-Hoc Committee update.
From Ms. Gloria Sanchez.
And if, Ms. Sanchez, if you would approach the podium, and I'm going to kick it off first to Councilmember August, my colleague on the Ad-Hoc Committee, to give a quick introduction.
How are you tonight, Gloria?
I'm fine, how are you?
Looking forward to a great presentation. I want to just let the public know I've been on the Ad-Hoc Committee for the Senior Citizens Committee, and I've been attending some of Gloria's meetings over the past several months, and she has good attendance. I want to always like to praise Gloria. She's actually, she's one of the best leaders I've ever had the pleasure of working with. She reminds me a lot of Kay Sinoceros, and I didn't agree with much of what Kay Sinoceros said, but Gloria possessing much of the same qualities. Kay Sinoceros could take a room of testosterone and turn it into bug wash, and Gloria has those leadership skills, and I know she's doing a great job with the Advisory Committee. She's here to update us a little bit, and even though I didn't agree with Kay Sinoceros, I agree with everything you do, Gloria, so stage is yours.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor Mann and City Council. I'm here to give you an update on this wonderful committee, and I'm proud to say that I am a senior citizen of the City of Menifee. And tonight, you have many senior citizens, and they should be very proud because you have taken the first step to recognize them for their productivity, given them the respect, and by this committee, you're going to show them that what they need is very important. Menifee is comprised of 80,000-plus citizens. Eighteen percent of those are senior citizens. It is for this reason that this Committee, Ad-Hoc Committee, was formed, and what we're going to be doing is that this Committee is going to be distributing surveys to our seniors and asking them about their needs, and it's a needs assessment survey, which will be distributed in different locations. And we hope to come back with you after we compile all the data with the information, and maybe you will then be able to prioritize all of what is needed for our seniors. At this time, I would like to just say that to better serve the needs of the seniors and seniors with disabilities, the Committee will be visiting 55-plus communities and other senior developments to discuss the purpose and goals of the survey. We have different locations where we will have the surveys available to our senior citizens. One of them is here at City Hall, the Kay Sinocero Senior Center, the Community Access Center, and of course, the Menifee Sun City Concern. These are all very important locations. We will also be having some at the library for people to pick up. We know that there are many communities that are not designated senior complexes, but seniors live there, so we're hoping to get a list of all those, the communities, so that we can contact them, go there, make a presentation, and make sure that they're involved with this important survey. At this time, I'd like to ask the people who serve on the Committee, who have spent many, many hours working on this, to please stand up and be recognized. For those of you who are on the Committee, please stand. Now, we number 20-plus, and we're always looking for more volunteers to join this Committee. Anyone who is interested can always call City Hall, can leave their information, and I will contact you so that you can be part of this great Committee. We are very, very honored that the City Council has seen us as an important part of this city, and this assessment survey is going to help bring to fruition a lot of the things that are needed by our senior citizens. So I thank you in advance, and I look forward to coming back with you, updating you as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Gloria, for your wonderful, wonderful work. Thank you very much. And to all the Committee members, Council, did you have any questions of the Speaker or the Ad-Hoc Committee? All right, well, thank you again, and we're on to approval of the meeting minutes, and I'll take a motion.
I approve.
And is there a second?
Second.
All right. I need to, if the clerk would record my abstention, the meeting minutes are ordered. Are there any modifications to the agenda?
No, Your Honor, it stands as posted.
Thank you. The agenda is approved. Onto public comments. Could we have the first speaker, please?
Yes, sir. Lisa Sobek and Brent Ferguson.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor Edgerton, Councilmember Denver, Councilmember Furman, Councilmember August. We're here tonight, first of all, I should let you know I'm here as Director of Public Affairs for the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints in this area of the county. I want to let you know that our church is going to have a historical event this Sunday, and there may be a lot of traffic at our chapel on Bradley Road. Our stake, which is a geographical area, will be splitting. We have grown so large, over 6,000 members, that there will be a split. This is open to the public, it's from 10:00 to noon. Anyone is welcome to attend if they'd like to see this historical event, to see how something like this is done. We will be having visitors, church leadership from Salt Lake City, Utah. But I'm here to introduce to you Brent Ferguson, and personally, I want to thank, before they turn the time over to him, I want to thank the Council for their support for this last weekend, for this 100th anniversary of the Boy Scouts of America that was held at Wheatfield Park. I heard back from Mayor Mann and from Councilmember Denver that they were unable to attend, but we had Tom Furman and Deputy Mayor Edgerton and Greg August there as judges of the scout events, along with Mrs. Edgerton and Mr. August's friend Kay, who put up with 105-degree weather. It was a hot day, and I just want to thank you. I'm going to turn the time over to Brent.
Lisa, did you say what time it is?
It's Sunday from 10:00 to noon.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, City Council, my name is Brent Ferguson. I've been involved in the scouting program for 56 years. We are here to thank you for partnering with us for an event that was incredibly amazing. We had over 500, almost 500, Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts, varsity scouts, and venture scouts, and close to 1,000 people who participated in that event. We could not have done it without your partnership, and that of Vince Valdez, the City Parks and Recreation Director. He was incredible, just gave us, and Madam City Clerk, we would like to make a presentation to the Mayor, and I don't know exactly how we are supposed to do that.
Well, I'll go ahead and come up on behalf of the whole Council. How's that?
Okay.
And we'll do it that way.
We have, to present to each member from the Boy Scouts of America, a President's Award. We have a patch that comes from Salt Lake, representing the 100-year celebration between the partnership of the Boy Scouts of America and the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. Scouting started in the year 1910. The LDS Church started partnering ship with them in 1913. We're the largest and oldest partnership with the Boy Scouts of America. We also have a patch for each Councilmember, a Menifee, California patch, representing. So, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much. Thank you, on behalf of the entire Council, I accept. Thank you. All right, thanks for the tremendous work that you all do.
He's like, yeah.
Grandsons, three grandsons, and two very close friends. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I say something as you're walking back to your seat? I just wanted to say it was terribly hot out there that day, but it was really worth a rich experience for me. I was never in the scouts, or I was never, I was always on the softball, baseball field or something like that. I wasn't in the scouts, or the Cub Scouts, or anything like that. But by going around there all day and seeing all your activities, and seeing the leadership of people like yourself and the other masters of the scout troops, and the activities that you people put together in combination with your scouts, I can see why you're a great experience and platform for the future of the country. So, I just want to say it was my pleasure to be there.
We especially thank those three that, over two hours of judging in 105, 106 weather, and I had the opportunity to spend some time with a couple of your wives and enjoy speaking with them. Thank you very much. Councilmember Furman?
I want to extend my appreciation also, because I was a scoutmaster for seven years back in Pennsylvania, and I know the work you guys go through, and I'm quite proud of you guys. I'll be a scout forever.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes, I, like so many on the Council, have been a scout, and I want to congratulate all the young men here and what you do. We know what you do, and we're very proud of you. We thank you for that. We also thank Lisa Sobek, who is PR for the LDS and their relationship. They had a rope bridge made. I don't know how many of you have ever seen these rope bridges where you grab the rope on each side, and then you try to traverse a rope, and here was this young bride, Lisa Sobek, racing across that bridge, and we've got pictures of her, and it was really delightful to see somebody who puts so much time into the community also be able to still have that much fun. And I even jumped through the tires, but I welted toward the end of the day, I've got to tell you, at 105.
Thank you. Mr. Denver?
When I was your age, I had some difficulties in school. My parents divorced and all kinds of social problems. I became a scout and turned, became an Eagle Scout, and then went on to what we called exploring, and became an assistant scoutmaster. It changed my life. And while I'm not perfect, I'm a whole lot better because of what I got taught as a scout. So thank you, guys.
Thank you for everything that you do. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Tom Warner.
Gentlemen, my name is Tom Warner, and I represent the Homeowners Association for the Providence Development, which is south of Holland between Sherman and Nordic. And I hope this is the right form, but if it's not, then I'll go somewhere else. But anyway, the problem is, our streets have never been finished. The Woodside Builders was the contractor, and they went bankrupt. So the second part of the street finishing was never done, and so therefore, it's cracked in some places. The water has undermined some of the streets. There's actually some potholes. So I got ahold of this, I've been doing this for like a couple of years, so I got ahold of the county, Riverside, talked to a lady there, Luna Roth, to see if there was a performance bond, which it was, and they were in the process of exercising that bond. But then she said the City of Menifee decided to assume all bonding responsibilities for the city. And so, I talked probably six months ago to Andy Powell, and also to Rudy Luna, and they weren't really giving me, they couldn't give me real, any definitive information. I tried to call them back this week, neither one of them returned a phone call, by the way. So I'm just trying to get an update on what's going on, and the county also additionally said that there's a statute of limitations on a performance bond, and ours for this development was extended for a year, and I don't know whether that's through the year of 2014 or not. So that's where it stands right now. The streets, and the streets, Menifee has never assumed responsibility for our streets because the project's not complete until the roads are finished, and so that's where it stands as I know it right now.
Thank you. Before you depart, Ms. Edgerton?
Yes, that's in my district, and I share your concern. I think probably our City Manager would be the best to explain that. We're well aware that that performance bond has expired, and we are, do something, we're going to do something about it. We did, in fact, we did it last week, but Rob, maybe you can explain this.
Yes, sir, thank you. Thanks for bringing this to our attention, too. It's something we've been working on for quite a while. Jonathan Smith, our Director of Public Works and Engineering, is actually the individual you want to talk with, and actually, if you want to hang out in the lobby and make sure he gets all the information proper, if this is the Woodside that was owned by WAT, is this the one we just actually completed? So, is it?
That's correct.
Okay, so at our last Council meeting, just to update everybody in the room, it's not a secret anymore, we actually went through a lengthy process to get WAT Communities to put the bond back up for that facility, so that D.R. Horton can, who was interested in purchasing the property, can purchase the property. So we don't need to pull the bond because the, there's actually a sale finally going through, and Jonathan can catch you up on everything, get the timing right, but we should be having D.R. Horton come in before us in the next three months or so to start moving forward on that project.
Thank you.
It's close.
I hope so, because.
The backstory is, there was an agreement that actually expired, and when the agreement expired, the bonds expired, the bonding company went out of business. So Jonathan, who's walking into the lobby to give you all more in-depth on this, and sorry for my lengthy explanation, but worked with WAT Communities to actually get that bond replaced, so that if the sale does not go through, the city has a surety and can pull the bond and complete the job ourselves.
So the property's actually being sold?
Correct.
Okay. That's good information. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker?
That's all the speakers on the public comment portion.
Thank you. Onto Councilmember updates and comments. Mr. August, you're up.
Well, I was going to mention the fact that I went to the scouting this week, and it's okay to mention a festival over at the Catholic Church right now. Well, anyway, I didn't bring my information, but Saturday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday the Catholic Church on, at Sun City on, what is that, McCall and Marietta, they're having a festival over there, and they're going to have entertainment Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. The only one I really care about is the one on Saturday evening, when they have the big bands for other people on the Council, the rap music is, they're not having rap music, I shouldn't say that. So they're having different country and western music on Friday, I think, and a little different type of music on Thursday. There's going to be games, and so the Catholic Church is really trying to fight as many members out of the community as they possibly can, because the Catholic Church wants to, feels they can do a better job interacting with the city than they've been doing. So I just wanted to pass that on to you Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. If you have any questions, you could probably call Al Powers over at the church, and he will give you all the details on it. Also, on Saturday night at 5:00, the VFW Beverly Humble, are you here tonight? She's not here. She was at the last meeting. They're having a spaghetti feed over at Webb Hall in Sun City, and it's for donations, it's for contributions, or donations to the VFW Local Chapter 56. So I, you can probably buy tickets at the door if anybody, 5:00 at Webb Hall Saturday night, if you choose to come over there and support our local chapter, I'm sure they would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. August. Councilmember Furman?
To add a little bit more on the carnival, it's going to be on the corner of Chambers and Marietta Road, and the country music bands will take the stage on Friday night, and rock and roll on Sunday night, but the big attraction that Greg and I are going to Saturday night is that 17-piece band, the Big Band Sounds. It's going to be on Saturday night, plus plenty of carnival rimes all through the days for the kids and everything else. And also, I think this was mentioned a meeting two ago, about can the Council waive fees on that, or did we make any kind of discussion?
I believe that staff. I believe that staff assisted them appropriately and the carnival is up and running.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Edgerton?
Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor. I'm a Director on the RTA, the Riverside Transit Authority, and don't usually talk about that and won't talk about it long right now. The RTA or the Riverside Transit Authority is the second largest transit authority in the United States of America. We carry a lot of people around on buses and when you talk about seniors, it's exceedingly important because we have a number of programs that cover them. We just had an approval by the California State Legislature for AB 1222 and just to cut through that very quickly to show you how complicated things can be, all your transit agents, particularly through California, San Diego, Riverside, Los Angeles, apply for grants on an annual basis. And there's a particular type of grant that they apply for which is just perfunctory. And so, they plan on that and place it into their, actually into their operational budget. There is a law which says that unions, when they look at grants coming down and they feel it in any way impacts their ability to collective bargain, that they can stop a grant. Oddly enough, nothing in this really affected collective bargaining, but the unions felt they should make a complaint and for some odd reason, the Department of Labor stopped those grants. And so, it became, some of you may have heard about it, looked like we might be having to cut some service here in the Menifee and Riverside area. The money we're talking about is in the millions. If you talk about Los Angeles, we're talking about money in the billions. And the city of San Diego, in fact, was about to have to shut down any number of lines. But this, this AB 1222 has given us a year exemption. It looks like this is gonna be cleared up now, so there doesn't, there isn't going to be any interruption of service. But I simply wanted you to know, there's a whole group of people out there, employees, administrators, to bus drivers, et cetera, that put in a lot of work to make sure that a lot of people can get moved around without any inconvenience. And it looks like that'll continue without any interruption. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Edgerton. Councilmember Denver?
I think it's been mentioned before to the city council that WRCOG, Western Regional County Government, has a new program, it's about a year old now, called the HERO Program. And everybody should participate in this. They will put solar panels on your roof. They will do, replace your windows to double pane. They will seal, they will, some of my rentals got water coolers on the windows. And all of that, you don't have to come up with money upfront. They put it on your tax bill and you just pay a monthly fee at a very reasonable price. It's a private enterprise, oddly enough, and this Riverside County has expanded this program to cover most of California. It's really good. Menifee takes a lot of advantages of it because you can get all this very, not necessarily inexpensively, but you don't have to pay any money upfront. And you ought to come and get some information from our city on that program if you haven't thought about it before.
Thank you, Mr. Denver, for that report. I have a couple of comments. In accordance with AB 1234, I have to report out on travel between the last council meeting and now. I attended the California Civic Leadership Institute in Sacramento, which was sponsored by the League of California Cities and actually Mayor Edgerton, back in 2010, had nominated me for that and I was selected to attend and got to go up there finally since their funding was restored. So, I'm reporting on that travel. Tomorrow, I'm going to be attending over the next two days, along with the city manager, the League of California Cities Annual Convention in Sacramento, and we'll be back on Friday. And then the only other thing I'd like to share is you probably heard SB 56, which was the bill to restore our lost motor vehicle licensing fee revenue, never made it out of Senate appropriations. And so, it never got heard in the Assembly, never got voted on in the Senate, and so therefore, a bill never got across the governor's desk. But we still are working on that feverishly. There seems to be an opportunity for that to come back in late February or March as the governor's office has asked us to do. So, we'll see how that plays out, but stay tuned on restoring our money. With that said, hearing no further comment from council members, on to the consent calendar. Do we have any speakers on the consent calendar?
No, sir.
Are there any modifications to consent? I'd like to pull item 10.4 for separate discussion and I'll entertain a motion on the balance of the agenda.
Shall I move the section?
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember August.
Aye.
Councilmember Furman.
Aye.
Councilmember Denver.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
Mayor Mann.
Aye. 10.4, Resolution of Support for the Bay Area Delta Conservation Plan. It's a resolution in support. I'm assuming that Eastern Municipal Water District has asked us to put that on and support. I just wanted to pull it off so that I could vote separately. I do not intend to support this resolution with an affirmative vote. I don't believe in the Bay Area Delta Conservation Plan. The current conservation plan that's in place already disrupts water supply to Southern California, so I'm just going to vote no on this. May I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve 10.4.
Is there a second?
All second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember August.
Aye.
Councilmember Furman.
None.
Councilmember Denver.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
Mayor Mann.
No.
Thank you.
On to public hearings, Agenda Item 11.1, a public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant Program, the Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report. And I'm assuming that we have a staff report.
Yes, we do. Mr. Mayor, members of council, Terry Willoughby will introduce our, Margarita Cornejo, our administrative analyst that runs our, coordinates our CDBG program. And I'll turn it over to Terry and they'll take it from there.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Today, I would like to present Margarita Cornejo. Margarita works in my office. She's an administrative analyst and she will, she's responsible for managing the day-to-day activities of the city's Community Development Block Grant Program, or CDBG. She'll be presenting a report on the activities performed in our initial year of activity, which, and she'll explain further. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. As Finance Director Willoughby has stated, tonight, we have a brief presentation related to the Comprehensive Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for the city's Community Development Block Grant Program.
Can we get this put up on our, as soon as she gets back?
We have someone coming from, I think, we don't know why, it's not up.
All right, please proceed.
Okay. The CAPER, or Comprehensive Annual Performance Evaluation Report specifically is a status or progress report, reporting the progress and efforts made related to the program year that was just completed. Program year 2012, 2013 is our first year participating as an entitlement community. And tonight's presentation will give a summary of what the status of the activities and programs that were included in 2012, 2013 is. Okay, so to give some general background on the Community Development Block Grant Program, the program was established by the Federal Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 with the primary objective of providing viable urban communities and by means of providing decent housing, a suitable living environment, and expanding the economic opportunities, principally to low and moderate persons. But the eligible activities include a wide array of activities and the program was designed to be a block grant program for the purposes that each participating agency would be able to decide what type of programs would be most effective and address the needs of their specific community. So, instead of dedicate, forcing every participating entity in the program to do the same programs, they wanted, the federal government wanted each community to kind of really look and see what, what were their needs and what type of programs would be most effective for them. So, each year annual allocation amounts are, is determined by HUD using a formula which includes several measures of community need. Ultimately, all programs and activities receiving CDBG funding must address at least one of three national objectives. And those would be, they must benefit to low, be, benefit to low and moderate income persons, aid in the prevention or elimination of slums or blight, or meet a need having a particular urgency. The city of Menifee has participated as an entitlement community in the CDBG program started with 2012. By doing so, the city was able to gain direct control over where its funding was spent. Prior to that, the city participated in the CDBG program through the county of In order to become an eligible entitlement community, the city was required to prepare the following. A citizens' participation plan, which was adopted in 2011 and set the policies and procedures of how the community input would be incorporated into any actions affecting the CDBG program. So, that would be the development of the consolidated plans, the annual action plans, and the Comprehensive Annual Performance and Evaluation Reports. Also, an analysis of impediments to fair housing was required to be completed and this was done and, completed and adopted in 2012, and a consolidated plan. The consolidated plan is essentially a five-year strategy plan that identifies what the community's goals are going to be and provides a framework for each year of how the city will work in achieving the impediments that were addressed in the analysis of impediment and how you will implement specific programs and activities. Annually, the city is required to prepare the following, an annual action plan. So, in 2012, the 2012-13 Annual Action Plan was adopted in May of 2012 and the 2013 Annual Action Plan was adopted in 2013. Additionally, a Comprehensive Annual Performance and Evaluation Report must be completed each year. And that's what we are presenting tonight. As stated, this is a status report, a progress report to inform you of what the status of the projects and activities that were included in the 2012-2013 Annual Action Plan are. So, with that said, the following table summarizes the activities and programs included in the 2012-2013 Annual Action Plan, the funds spent to date and the person served. So, there was an administration component. There was also fair housing component, which is a requirement of all participating entities. And there's a minor home rehabilitation grant program specifically designated to assist income-eligible senior and/or permanently disabled persons to our owner occupants residing within the city of Menifee. We also had a number of public services that we provided, ranging from services specifically targeted to assist youth to also assisting our senior And lastly, we had two community facility projects which we incorporated into the 2012-2013 program. And that would be the Quail Valley Community Park Project, as well as the Quail Valley Fighter Hall Project. So, summarized in total, our annual allocation was approximately $388,000. To date, we have spent about $125,000 as far as person served. The goal was to at least serve 3,400 people. And as you can see, we exceeded that by approximately 300 people because a total of 3,700 were served so far. So, in conclusion, tonight's recommendation is that to conduct a public hearing and to consider adoption of a resolution approving the Comprehensive Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, as well as authorizing staff to submit the CAPER to HUD.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Are there any questions from the council of staff? Mr. Edgerton?
Yes, does this, would this involve any kind of rental programs at all whatsoever?
No. The city's CDBG program does not involve any form of rental assistance or really, as far as housing activities, the only types of housing activities that the program includes is our Minor Home Rehabilitation Grant Program, which is specific to owner occupants. And also, there is an age requirement of 62 years of age or older, or if you're a permanently disabled person. And apart from that, there's fair housing services which does not include any form of rental assistance. It's strictly providing things like counseling services or maybe a first-time homebuyer workshop, things of that nature.
Don't we have to demonstrate to HUD that we have a certain performance level for people, including families who need low-income homes, and that those be made available to them?
Well, we, there is a housing element or, you do have to address housing needs. And we are addressing it through, for example, our minor home repair. There isn't a minimum amount that you're addressing. We specified in our consolidated plan, for example, that we were going to be assisting at a minimum 50 people with, through our Minor Home Rehabilitation Program in five years. So, about 10 per year. We also referenced that if there are any additional county programs that are available, which are not part of our program, those are available to our residents, but that's not part of our funding and we do not dedicate any funding to that.
Well, we don't dedicate funding to it, but it's part of our policy to bring in our stabilization program. Isn't that related to the CDBG?
Federally, it, NSP, or Neighborhood Stabilization Program, was a component of CDBG program. It is not part of our program because we don't receive NSP funding. NSP funding with respect to this particular county is handled by the county of Riverside and that program existed prior to us having our allocation as an entitlement community. And it would exist even if we weren't participating as an entitlement community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. August?
I'm not gonna ask you a question about that, but I want to mention something about Neighborhood Stabilization Program. And you said the funds, actually, they're HUD funds administered by the county of Riverside. But maybe we can bring this up in the future, Mr. Johnson, we can find out a little bit more about it. But recently, we got a call from a resident saying, hey, they're doing a neighborhood stabilization program sale in our neighborhood. And that kind of upset the community. The Realtor told him that it was all city-funded, the city's behind it. You're probably aware of this. So, all I'm saying is, and I would ask the city manager, perhaps we could look into it. If the county's gonna put these kind of programs into our city, and I do believe the last city council agreed to the stabilization, to be, to be a part of that stabilization program, I think they should at least let the city know what they're doing regarding our neighborhoods in the city. And I think Mr. Johnson's gonna look into that for us.
Yes, we'll definitely look into that and bring a report back. Mr. Edgerton?
Yes, and following up on what Councilman August was referring to, we have a number of areas and there's hope and support generally puts people of low income and, who are not qualified for loans, into what's referred to as blighted areas. But the residents get unhappy because at times they go into the best areas we have in Menifee. So, you'll have a number of people who will have worked hard and have qualified and worked on their homes. And then HUD puts somebody in next door which doesn't, that person doesn't have the qualifications. They take it out of the market so that that house could have sold on the private market at a, as a higher price. So, what they do is it depreciates the value of real estate in that area. And that's what gets some of our community upset.
Are there any other questions of staff? Thank you very kindly. I'll open the public hearing at time 7:50. Madam Clerk, could you confirm that this is properly noticed and have we received any correspondence?
It is properly noticed. We have not received any further correspondence and we do have speakers tonight.
Please call for the first speaker.
John Corlett.
Mayor Scott Mann, council. I'm Jack Corlett and I represent the Menifee Sun City Concern. As you well know, the city did participate with us in a CDBG grant. And during the course of that year, 2012 and 2013, we served 900 new seniors and we had 25,500 people during the course of the year that we worked with. Thank you very much for your participation.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Red Sullivan.
Red Sullivan. Good evening, mayor and council members, and people in the audience. I'm the president and CEO of Menifee Sun City Concern, and I'm here just to thank you for our grant last year, that we were able to help another 900 new people, who now encompass our figures of closer to 36,000 for this year. We were able to bring on a lot of volunteers to help with staff time, and make phone calls, and take care of the seniors. And regarding rental, we have no place to send our seniors to rent a house. Section 8 is way, way, has an extremely long list, and we get calls on a continual basis saying, is there any place we can live? I don't have homes, I don't have places to put them. But we do send in the Department of Aging, we do talk to some of the local realtors. But we do want to thank you for giving us the money, and we're looking forward to the grant for next year, so that we can continue taking care of the seniors. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers?
Yes, sir. Les Nursey.
Good evening, everybody. I'm the guy that you referred to, Mr. City Manager, as resident who called up and was upset. Was it you? Sorry, Mr. August? Okay, well, my neighbors, they say things to me, and I forget who they are, but they're pretty mad at the moment. We live down in Menifee South, and I'm a little, well, I'm very confused now, so I'm going to talk about something I don't know very much about, but I've spent a lifetime doing that, so don't be surprised. But I thought, and according to your caper report, it says the city of Menifee Finance Department is responsible for the CDBG program and policies, and for monitoring all its projects, of which the NSP is one. Neighborhoods, well, excuse me, the Neighborhood Stabilization Product is a CDBG program. Now, I know I'm not picking on Menifee, the city of Menifee. I love the city of Menifee. It's administered by the city of Riverside County, and this is, I've just tried to find out what the heck is going on, because a neighbor came to me and said, how come this house that I've been waiting to buy on our street, there's only 10 houses on our street, we've been waiting for two years to buy it for my mom, so she could, we can move my mom next door, because she's old, and it's just been sold by the city of Menifee, quote, the realtor, to, through the city, through Riverside County, under this program. If you check what Riverside County say, and I looked at the typical one, it says, for example, the last program, Sheffield Foreclosure Renovation, I don't know who they are, incorporated, a private company, will use up to $5 million. It's in fact $82,000 short. $5 million for the acquisition, rehabilitation, and resale of 10, remember 10, vacant foreclosed bank-owned, single-family homes within designated target areas in the city of Menifee, and Paris, and a couple of others. Now, I'm not great at math, but if you spend $5 billion on 10 homes, that's half a million dollars per home. Does that sound like a blighted area? Trust me, the homes where I live on our street, and they've just bought one, are typical middle-family homes, $323,500 each. I don't know what's going on, but the house that's sat there needs $20,000 worth of coat of paint and working on their front yard. It's certainly not a half-million-dollar home. Now, they're going to give it, as it says, to qualified low, moderate-income, first-time home buyers, whose incomes don't exceed $120,000, 120% of the median income for the area. I've got nothing against low-income people, I was one. But what I want to know is, if you would, before you approve this report, because I don't think we know everything, who determines the designated target areas? Do we have any input? How did my street get on it? It's not blighted. Who determines the recipients of these homes? Are they chosen by our local community? Are they good, hard-working folk? Or are they, to be rude, chosen by some faceless, left-wing bureaucrat in Riverside who thinks his job is to redistribute your wealth and my wealth to unemployable, lazy, permanent welfare-sucking entitlement people? I don't know. We need to know this, the city needs to know that. Your report says that you run these programs. Who determines the sale price of the property? If they flood this place for $100,000, what happened to my property, and everybody else is on the street?
Mr. Nursey, that's your time.
Sorry. It's a neighborhood destabilization product, not stabil, it's destabilization. Hemet, they, I'm told, does hundreds of them.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
As we mentioned earlier, we're definitely looking into the program. What I can tell you through our CDBG program is we do look at programs that assist in the ability of people to purchase or first-time homebuyer programs. Like Margarita said, though, we don't, our money doesn't go toward that. We do, unfortunately, or fortunately, however you want to look at it, we have an impediments to fair housing, which we have to overcome in our CDBG entitlement program, and because the city operates this program, and I believe it's based on census tract information, so when the census goes, they create census tracts, tax rate areas, and we get credit for the county running the program. And there are areas in Menifee that qualify, and there are areas and other areas of the county that qualify. We would, we would receive credit in our application or annual report based on what that program does, but our money doesn't go toward it. But like we mentioned earlier, we'll get more information on it, we'll bring somebody down here, we'll explain it, we'll get inside it, we'll figure out how those census tracts, or how those tract areas are located, and we really, what we really need to figure out is how the houses are identified, is that what you're saying? Is it because there's less money owed on the property, and it's easier to get that money out of it, or how that works? But we'll definitely look into it.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Do we have any other speakers?
Not on this item, your honor.
Let me, do we have no other speakers for public testimony?
That is correct.
I'll close the hearing at time 7:58. Mr. Edgerton?
I just wanted to point out, it looks like they put another one on the block in a blighted area around the corner from me. The house across the street from it just closed on the market for $450,000. That's in the marketplace. Now, what's going to happen to that community when some, they shoehorn somebody else in there that gets 120% down, and it does, it depreciates the values, and my feeling about this, even though we call it a block grant, it operates more like a categorical grant, in my opinion, because they get very specific about what you can and can't do in a very broad range. If we could tailor this thing, and we're talking about senior citizens, I'd be more than happy to support it. And that's, those are different things. And Red, as you know, I supported your program, very supportive of what Gloria Sanchez does with seniors, and they do need help. But we need, when we start talking about families and taking things out of the private market, and then marking them down in the neighborhood, which then affects the appraised value for the value of those homes in that neighborhood, I would want more information before I would be supportive.
Mr. Denver?
We really need to stop talking about this. We don't understand it. I've, I've sold, I have not personally sold, but I've seen five of these home sales in Menifee and in Paris area. It's nothing like what you guys are saying. These, let's not talk about it, because let's have a little report, you're going to all change your mind. The net of it is, all it is, is they're taking people who make the amount of money you make, and the amount of money, middle-income people who do not have a great credit score, but they have a job, they qualify for everything, they, the real thing is, they pick the nastiest home in a good area. They fix it all up, they don't put $5 million into them. It's about $40,000, which is a lot, but they fix it all up. Instead of putting grass seed in, they put grass, and they do all this stuff, they make it look really beautiful, and then they sell it with a very small down to somebody who can really afford it. They, it goes on the MLS. You can, you can buy it, the market, the market price is similar to the rest of the homes. It's not above anybody else, it's, it's a, you know, it's a decent price. It's a profit thing. They buy them at one price, put the $40,000 in, and then sell them at all of that price. Now, there is a government program that gives them a few, you know, few thousand dollars for certain things. Wait until you see what the program is. What we're all talking about is, we're spreading ignorance.
And then you rent those.
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, just to reiterate, that is not part of the caper that we're providing to the council this evening, nor is it a part of what you're voting on tonight. It's an acceptance of the CDBG caper evaluation for the last year.
The previous year. And that's what I want, I thank you for that clarification. My understanding of the action before us tonight is to adopt the resolution forwarding the caper to the federal government, justifying what we've done with our program in the previous year. We're not taking any action on new programs, we're not taking action on new funding, and we're certainly not taking any action on a Neighborhood Stabilization Program. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
All right. Is there any other discussion with council?
Yes, since this motion will only affect what's already happened in the past, can we be assured that we may have a workshop and a clear understanding? I do agree with Councilman Denver, I don't think this is clearly understood. And before I proceeded to, because originally, when we came up with the community development block grant funds, I voted against it, and then in the subsequent year, because of certain senior programs, I went along with it, because unfortunately, the intent of block grant funds isn't followed that closely by HUD. They, they nail you with, with a very wide range of things that you have to follow. So I would like to know that in the future, Rob, that we'll have a lot of discussion before we vote on anything in the future regarding this matter, because I'll be inclined, when it's HUD, to vote against it, unless I can pull certain things out in reference to seniors only.
Thank you, Mr. Edgerton. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, we'd be happy to get a presentation on the NSP program in the near future.
Thank you kindly. With all that said, is there any other council comments? Then entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
Motion to adopt the resolution.
Roll call, vote, please.
Councilmember August.
Aye.
Councilmember Furman.
Aye.
Councilmember Denver.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
And Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, staff. On to discussion items. Item 12.1, Discussion of Recommendations of the Ad-Hoc Committee on Metal Shipping Container Ordnances. And for the benefit of the audience, we had Councilmember Denver and Councilmember August were on that committee, and we have a couple of speakers on this item, we'll take those speakers now, and then we'll take a staff report.
Yes, your honor. Jackie Fenoffi? Not even close, right?
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Jackie Fenneroli. I realize that most legislation is passed with good intentions, but history is replete with unintended consequences of that legislation, and we need to be thoughtful and careful in weighing the benefits for the costs of any legislation. Banning of shipping containers will harm the economy of Menifee. It harms the economy because it reduces the amount of work for businesses that move shipping containers. It harms the economy because it reduces the amount of work for businesses that modify shipping containers. It harms the economy because businesses that use shipping containers to store their materials and equipment won't be able to. They'll have to store their stuff off-site. By having it off-site, that reduces productivity and the economic benefits. It also unfairly targets those low-income citizens who don't have garages on their properties, or senior citizens who can't afford to build a garage, and instead use a shipping container to store their valuables. Shipping containers are also green. They're reused from shipping containers to now store our valuables. Also, there's been some comments that the shipping containers' aesthetics are unpleasant. I disagree. I'm a general contractor and engineer. I like the proportions of shipping containers. As an engineer, I like the structural integrity of the shipping containers, they're earthquake-proof, fire-proof, weather-proof, and rodent-proof. Their uses can be creative. The internet is full of examples of shipping containers used to build single-family homes, multi-family homes, businesses, and also temporary and permanent structures. They're also very useful. The Riverside County government is full of yards, city government yards, that use shipping containers to store their equipment. City yards, school yards, use them to store athletic equipment. And also, citizens who need additional storage obviously use them for that purposes on their land, because Riverside County is full of shipping containers. Code enforcement actions banning shipping containers are easily defended against, because those citizens can show that code enforcement is selectively targeting them, just by showing examples of the city governments and county governments' use of shipping containers. Also, the councils, the council stated to the paper that the reason they want to ban shipping containers is because they want a, an upscale community.
Fenneroli, that's your time.
Please vote no on this item. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Mike Danford.
Mike Danford is my name. I don't know how I follow that act. Because I, she'd said everything that I was going to say, and far more eloquently. I've been here a little over a quarter of a century. I've got land out there in Romaland, and it's all horse property. Shipping containers would be an upgrade to most anything you find out there. It's not next to elegant buildings and the city around here. In fact, it's not next to anything. It's usually just flat land, and, you know, next to it is dirt. They're very, very helpless, like she said. I have them, everybody has them, and they've been around for a long time. I don't know of anybody that complains about them. I don't see anybody living in them, because most people that have them store their stuff in them. Stuff that would be, excuse me, that would be all over the land, on your property, that you put in this container, and it kind of gets rid of the clutter, you know? I have a lot of stuff in some of mine that I don't want outside, like pieces of lumber that I use, and parts and things, who knows what I've got in there? I don't. It's just a lot of things that would otherwise be outside. And I've got a three-car garage, and it's full, too. So, you know, I, I see, we need to be very careful about removing these containers, because people are going to find other ways to do it, and it might not be as, as simple. I mean, these containers can be painted, you could stack them and make it look like an old Dutch barn, and put siding on them, make them look rather, rather good, you know? I'd be willing to do something like that. I'd paint them, do, you know, make them the same color as the ground. If you want, you wouldn't even see them, but after a quarter of a century, and nobody's ever complained, I don't understand why anybody would want to ban them out, you know, I live out in Romaland, your district, or my, our district. And there's just no reason to come out there and fool with that. It's been there for decades, and there's no problem. It's like looking for trouble, you know, to go out there and fool with that. There's so many other things that, you know, the council could spend time, money, and energy on, and I guess when that goes red, I'm done, right?
Yes. I'll beat it to the punch.
Before, could I ask you a question before you step down?
Yeah.
How big is your property?
It's an acre.
You're illegal.
I was, I was illegal a half, a quarter of a century ago, when they were sitting there. Nobody said a word.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Jim Patelli.
My name is Jim Patelli, John. The main problem is, Romaland does not have police support. I see a police car maybe twice a year. My house was broken in, I filed a report, my cars were vandalized. The only thing I can do is have a storage- The only thing I can do is have a storage compartment and put everything in it. My streets are dirt, in the winter they mud, in the summer they washboard. I need a tractor to level them. The seats of my tractor get totally destroyed by the sun. I have to put it inside a container. If I can't do it, I've been here since 75, we need to do something. Romaland never wanted to be part of Menifee. None of us voted for it. So, I don't know. But if you take away the containers from us, I have two acres, you're going to have stuff piled all over the land, and then fight me. And, John, you should know, we keep our place totally clean. You cannot see anything besides, I have a house that's 200-foot furnace. Nothing can be seen past that. But I want a clean place, but I need to have a little freedom to do stuff. I came to America for freedom. Hell, I was better off in Italy. Yep? So, that's all I can say.
Thank you, sir. Any other speakers?
No, sir.
Thank you. Okay, on to staff report for this agenda item. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Mr., I'm sorry, Councilmember Furman, you were first.
We were on the ad hoc committee, you want us to go first?
Well.
I don't know whether, are you going to do a whole staff report on it, or?
No.
Let's, let's take the report from the ad hoc first, and then you're up. Okay, Mr. August, and then Mr. Furman.
I just, I want to kind of give the, the audience here tonight, kind of a little background on the ad hoc committee. Somebody, I get to go first, Mr. Denver, so you'll get your chance, right? Anyway, I was, had the pleasure of sitting on the committee with Mr. Denver. That was a real experience for me, and he knows more about ad hoc committees than I do. But I'll never forget something he said when we were up there. He said, "You will agree with me before we leave here, even if the Lord comes to you and tells you to change your mind." And I said, "Well, this is tough, a little more than I imagined I was going to get into." But I just want to let Mr. Denver know that I haven't changed my mind, and the Lloyd never intervened yet, so I'm going to stick with what we went with. Anyway, what we did was we put two different plans together. One is Mr. Denver's, and it's quite different than mine, and I'll let him explain his. Mine tends to be a little bit more liberal, allow containers. Something like the number of containers is based on the size of the land. To me, it's kind of, it's, it's, it's a plan that the Planning Commission previously applied. I did get a letter here from somebody supporting Mr. Denver, and I want to read it to you because it's one of my constituents and somebody that I respect very much. And it says, "After reading the article regarding shipping containers in this morning's press enterprise, we are in complete agreement with Councilman John Denver. We, too, want an upscale and high-quality city. If extra space is needed, use a garage or rent a storage unit, which this, which this area has plenty of. A trip around our city on almost any road quickly reveals that we have a real blight problem. Let's try to beautify many in every way possible. Please ban container use altogether." Well, as much as I respect this person, I'm diametrically opposed to that position, and the ordinance that I support will support containers, with one exception, and I hope the container people will understand why I went here. I'm going to support, one of, my ordinance, the one that I favor, will support shipping containers, like the planning staff agreed to. But I did agree to the fact that in six years, all seagoing shipping containers have to be gone. And the reason why I say that is I won't be here anymore, I'm just kidding. It's kind of like kicking the can down the road, I guess. But I, I believe there's cultures here in the city of Menifee that clash, and I live on a 7,000-foot, square-foot lot, just like the person that wrote this letter does. And, and I know not much about the culture that you people live out there, and I do believe that the shipping container is, is, is the tool of your choice. I do believe it plays a big part in your life, and I certainly don't want to interfere with that. And, and to ban them altogether, that would be too draconian for me, so I would rather take a slower approach. The manufacturers will probably come up with something in six years that probably are a little more aesthetically pleasing, and maybe we can have a dialogue there. So, I think that's pretty much all I said, Mr. Denver. And, and I think the staff, when they report, will go over the ordinance that I favor. So, I'm for allowing containers, at least for six more years.
That's right, that's, exactly.
This is a discussion of the council, ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Denver?
Actually, that's pretty good, pretty good information on the ordinance that Councilman supports. The only difference between our two proposed ordinances is, is that his, for his, in the future, for the next six years, because they all go on both, on both ordinances in six years. But on his, you can put one container on one, one or two acres, two containers on three to five acres, five, on five acres or more, you can put three. On mine, I'm using as my basis is the Riverside County ordinance, and I'm saying five acres is the, you can put any more ordinances only on five acres or more. But here's the thing that everybody needs to understand. All the proper shipping containers that are on properties now, stay there. Everybody, I'll bet, who spoke today, and frankly, at the last four meetings, all have illegal containers that are, because right now, the rule is, you can have a container on five acres or more. No one, so far, to my knowledge, has gotten up and spoken, has five acres or more. So, you're all in violation. My point is this, we're going along with that. You can have your containers, it's perfectly all right. If they're there, they stay there, on both ordinances. The only question is if you can put more in, and the only question is for the council to decide is, do we ever have them go away or not? I personally think this is a great compromise. Why? Mr. August said kicking it down the road. I don't like to kick things down the road, with the exception of maybe this one. If the council, six years from now, who likely won't be us, likes this ordinance, and they let it live six years and a day, it goes into, that portion of it where you have to take your, your container off, goes into effect. Anytime between now and six years from now, they can change this ordinance. So, it's, plenty of time for people to digest it, plenty of time for discussion, plenty of time for your higher fire council people. This is all, I think, a great compromise. The other thing is, is that's not being mentioned, but should be, in the, with, trying to be honest here. Anything that isn't a seagoing container has 18 months to be removed now, on both ordinances. And so, if you took a trailer, or say, a pickup truck, and you cut the cab off, which, by the way, there are some in Romaland, and you, you put it on your property, sealed it all up, or like, in one place, they took a car, an old car, and just cleaned out the seats, filled it full of stuff, and anyway, those, you have eight, we even gave those 18 months, and they have to go away. But that's not, that's, that's not allowed, even for six years. That's only allowed for 18 months. The other big issue is, no new, depending on which one you want, which ordinance you want, there's, under mine, you have to have five acres or more to put a new one in, I think. And it keeps getting, we've changed it about nine times. And Greg's ordinance, if you have, if you have, if you're on one acre, you can put one container in. If you're on three to five acres, you can put two containers in, but they have a lifespan of six years. Now, why did we put that, why do we feel comfortable with six years? One was because it kicks it down the road, and we have more time for conversation. Two is, we don't want to affect all the people who put, especially before the city of Menifee, put their containers in 25 years ago, they stay. They stay for six years, so you'll get your value out of them. You'll get your value out of them. Now, we do have some sub-rules in here about painting them, covering them. One young lady here very eloquently spoke, absolutely has almost nothing to do with this, these ordinances. This has nothing to do with commercial. We're not speaking one word about commercial containers. This is only residential. So, it doesn't affect businesses, except in the sense of businesses that put containers on and off. It doesn't affect them at all. If you, if you have a business, this, neither of these have anything to do with business containers. However, some number of months from now, we are going to come up, I hope, we're going to at least discuss a container for business ordinance. We haven't, any of us even talked about that. So, you have, fellow council members, we have two ordinances that you spend some serious time reading. They're similar, they're slightly different, and I recommend we choose one. Of course, my vote is the five-acre minimum one, for new ones, for new containers, but I'm flexible.
Excuse me, sir.
When we pass this.
Just, for the, for the benefit of the audience, we're, we're inside, what we call inside the rail here, we're, public comment period is done. We're, we're having a debate amongst the council, so if you could refrain from engaging the council from your seat, we would appreciate it. Mr. August, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, just, just one, just, I, I think John did a good job in explaining his views, but one thing, the one difference that I have in there that he pointed out, but there are people that are waiting to get shipping containers right now that are in, in the midst of a moratorium the city put on it. My feeling is, if they want to go out and get one for six years, they should have the same, now, there, there will be different parameters on if they go out and get one now, setbacks and so on and so forth. But if they want to go out and get one now and spend the money for six years, that's in, in the plan that I support.
All right, thank you, gentlemen, for your work on this. Mr. Furman, before I take your, you've been waiting quietly and patiently. Ms. Biggs, did you have something to add about the more, any of this, before we take more council member comment?
Yes, I just wanted to call the attention of the council, the fact that you are basically deciding which ordinance to send to the Planning Commission for processing. There is not a decision this evening on this.
Thank you for that clarification. Mr. Furman?
All right, I want to thank you, the mayor, for kind of letting me take the lead on this. The, like Julie Biggs, she wants definitive answers and directions, so I think what we ought to do is, we ought to discuss, there's nine points on this, on this ordinance, and she's, wants to know what we want to change, so I think we ought to take them one at a time, and go through them, and it won't take, it won't take long. Now, point 010, does anybody have any objections to that point, to that one? We're going right here, right on your ordinance, right here, your last page. 9.12010.
But you're talking about 12.1, Tom.
12.01, okay, either one. The one that's, the one that she needs direction on.
Needs direction on both of them.
No, there's only one.
Yeah.
The one's a repeal, or the other one? Okay, all right, let's, let's get to this page, so we're all on the same page, right here, intent. All right, I have no problem with that. The intent is good, okay? So, I'm, I'm going to approve 010, that's a good part of the ordinance.
Hang on just a minute, Mr. Furman. Ms. Biggs, you have something to add to the discussion real quick?
Well, there are two separate ordinances.
Okay.
And if you look at the staff report, the, it may be easier to go through the points that are listed there as to the changes. In other words, the first real question is, do you want to keep the five-acre minimum, or do you want to go to the other one?
Well, the, the, the thing per point of discussion, we have nine points, and that comes, that'll come on a second point. I feel that we should take them one at a time and see if we agree with everything. Right here, 10 to 90.
Okay, to clear, on, on the second draft ordinance that's contained in the staff report is what Councilmember Furman's talking about. On page one, where it says, lists the sections down towards the bottom, where you got intent, metal shipping container, permitted zoning, et cetera, et cetera, that's what he, flip over. Yeah, keep, flip over. Keep going.
Point 010.
Go to the next ordinance, John.
One of these has six points, the others, the other one has nine.
One has nine.
Now, hold, let me just, before, before, gentlemen, before we go down this road, we had the ad hoc committee bring forth these two recommendations. And they've already gone through the ordinance, and so, I don't want to sit here and go through the ordinance line by line. Why can't we just take the recommendations of our colleagues and then decide?
Well, the, I think I have a good point, if you'll let me add lib a little bit.
Go ahead.
Please, give me the freedom.
You got it.
Let's go to, let's go to 020. All right. I'm not happy with the definition of the, the metal shipping containers. I agree with John that only seagoing shipping containers should be discussed. These railroad cars, cabooses, semi-trailers, shipping containers shouldn't even be in this ordinance.
Second, I agree with that.
That, that, I think, 020 should be just changed to meddling, metal, seagoing containers only. You understand it?
Yep.
Does anybody disagree with that?
Mr. Johnson?
I don't disagree, just a clarification. If it comes in a shipping container from the ocean and gets put, that same shipping container gets put on a train, are we talking about the same thing now?
Well, the seagoing container goes on a train to go here, but it's still a seagoing.
So, I just want to make sure that you're not eliminating something by the wording of it. That's why we added that into the definition, to protect that.
I don't like the railroad cars, cabooses, semi-trailers, and any other thing you can knock off a chassis as a, as a shipping.
Excuse me, point of order, Councilman Furman, are, are you suggesting, then, that anything other than a seagoing container would then be?
Has to be out of the city in 18 months.
Okay.
Right, John? Correct.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Is it clear?
I'm clear.
We're all in consensus?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Now, 030, when it comes down to the size of the lot, I'm going to go to John. Aren't, aren't the majority of lots two and a half acres in the city? Isn't that the normal subdivision? Okay? I'm only suggesting that where it says three, to change it to two and a half acres. To, to comply with, with. It says three to five.
If I may, page two.
Okay.
Page two, section 9.12030.
Since the normal division of land is two and a half.
Letter D, number two. And then you have A, B, and C.
A, B, and C, on B, change it to three to two and a half.
The only, the only problem with that is, is that it's just badly written. The way it's written is, A is one to two acres, one container. What they really mean is one to 2.999 acres.
Yeah, but I'm only saying the normal subdivision is two and a half acres. So, let's make it two and a half.
But then you go 3.0 to 5.999 acres, that's really what they're saying.
I know, but why not two and a half?
No, that's not right. It's three to five, and then five or more.
I know, but why not two and a half when that's a normal subdivision? After you split five acres, it splits to two and a half. Okay? All the, all the acres are two and a half.
Let's do one to two, two and a half acres for one container.
Yeah.
And two and a half to five.
Good, I agree with you.
Great.
Okay, you got that?
No, wait, why, I think the whole council has to agree on this.
Well, I know, but John and I agree. I'm asking if anybody else disagrees.
My property was two and a quarter.
Yeah, but you're, you're rated two and a half. Does anybody object, object to that verbiage change? Okay?
What is, give me one more time? So, can they have, if they have one acre, can they have one?
Yeah, but the, the normal division of land is. The change that to two and a half acres on, on B, and on B, on, on E. Okay?
Let me, let me restate.
It was on D, B.
On paragraph D to A, it should read one to 2.5, and on D, and on the next paragraph, B, which should read 2.5 to 5.
Right. And the next one, done.
And then also on paragraph E, B, where it says, it should also read one to 2.5, and then 2.5 or more.
Right. Okay. The following page. Okay. I. Okay. Wheels shall not be left on a container now is a moot point.
Correct, that should be removed.
All right, so remove I, because there is. All right, so remove I, because there is no wheels on seagoing containers. Okay?
Tom, on L, it says metal shipping container.
H, I.
Storage container, you might want to put metal shipping container.
Well, I think, now, the definition of metal shipping containers under definition is a seagoing container. So now, every time a metal shipping container is referred to, it is the seagoing container, right? All right. Let's deal with M. Okay? Like one of the speakers said, the, the metal storage containers, a lot of landscapers and stuff store their equipment. I would like to see that changed to, they're no use as a place of manufacturing, but storage of their equipment is a lot. That's up for discussion.
What was this?
Okay, under paragraph M.
I'm following.
You're, you're saying that, that those should be allowed for home occupations, is what you're saying?
If a guy has a landscaping business or a cement making business, and he keeps his cement mixer and his, his gardening equipment and his lawn mowers, all right, he doesn't manufacture anything, but why wouldn't he be allowed to store his lawn mowers and stuff for his, his landscaping business?
I, I don't agree. I, we have to say, this, this is, that's a major change. I think we leave this alone for now, and this is brought back to, we can all think about that.
Okay.
This is brought back to us. We're not voting on anything. It's going to the planning commission.
Okay.
And then it comes back to us. We can have a discussion on that.
All right.
But that's a major thing that we're not going to sell tonight.
That's fine. Okay, let's, let's have a future discussion on that. That's fine.
Planning commission.
Okay, on point 050. Okay. I am suggesting that the council has to come up with a filing fee. Could we incorporate this, Mr. Johnson, into the agricultural registration fee of $30.75 and get it done over the counter? Could you come back with a recommendation on that?
If that's the choosing of the, of the council, and that's the direction, we can absolutely look into that. I don't see an issue. We didn't come up with a, I don't believe the ad hoc committee came up with a fee for registration or anything like that.
Yeah, well, it's just a suggestion that says the council has to. We going to do it now or later? It's just a suggestion.
It's a permit fee, right?
Yeah, just a permit fee, for a filing fee.
Mr. Denver?
What is the fee for this, if it were accepted as written?
We have to come up with a fee, John.
No, there's no fee for putting a container on your property, or an annual fee or anything? Well, at any rate, I don't want to, I don't want to subsidize these. So I think this needs to go to the planning commission, have the normal fee for them. I don't want to set it here at this point. Let, let it go through the process, and let the standard fee come up. I don't want to make this a $5 fee. I'm exaggerating to make the point.
All right.
Ms. Biggs?
Yes, the, any fee for the registration permit would be the cost of actually processing the permit. We would have to determine what that cost would be, because you can only charge what the, what it actually costs the city. So we could include a statement that says, the permit fee will be set by resolution of the city council.
Okay.
And leave it at that.
That'd be fine. Be fine.
This is only for new, new containers.
All right. Right. Okay, we're on A. All right, now, under number two, it says time for application. Application should be submitted at least 60 days before. Now, I think it's our intention, and John's intention, to not allow any new containers in the city.
Sorry, I assume I can just speak. On my ordinance, let me ask Ms. Biggs, because it's gone back and forth and back and forth. Is there any new ordinances, and any new permits on either of these ordinance, excuse me, is there any new containers allowed on either of these ordinances? As I remember, I, I don't want to misspeak.
Let me check, because I took your directions, and I'm not sure how that came down.
Well, the staff report says, in each case, under paragraph one, it says, current five acre minimum for placement of any new container.
Right, that's my opinion.
Yeah.
The second one, it says the, any new container, so.
That's, that's the way I remember.
Yeah, I think that's correct.
The county adopted the change 1.6 to 2.10.
So you could, in fact, buy a new one at any time in the next six years, install it, and then it would still have to be removed at the end of that period of time.
Right, but it might be on five acre minimum, or one, two, three acres.
Yes.
It would, it would be, the way you have the ordinance, one, two, three acres, I would believe. I'm not adverse to Mr. August's suggestion, if they want to get one for six years, why, that would be fine. Okay?
Thank you.
Now, we're going to point 07060. Upon issuing of a metal shipping container permit, shall be valid for 36 months. If, if you're successful at having them eliminated for six years, what is the, why not just have the permit for the six year expiration date? Now, you're saying in 36 months, they have to get an additional permit until the six years is up? You see my point?
I think that if this, let's, let it go to the planning commission. On other ordinances, there's, there's, you have to bring, get a permit for, let, let this follow the district plans.
Yeah, but I mean, but those ordinance continue in perpetuity, but this one here is going to end, so.
I know. I just think this ought to go the way that our regular.
Okay, well, I'm fine, I'm fine with that, but these are just topics I want to brought up for discussion.
Yeah, but I can support that right now. Can, how's the council feel about that?
Well, I, my thought on that, I could support that, but it needs to have a time certain in it, as opposed to saying six years. If we, if we mean six years, then we should say by December 31 of 2019. So there's a time certain.
It also says it in, in the next paragraph.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have a consensus on that, or is it, do you want to let the planning?
I'm good with that.
I'm good.
You're good with that?
Tell me that again.
The application period for the metal shipping containers will be six years.
But no, but no later than December 31, 2019.
Or whatever the date is.
Or whatever the date this planning commission comes up with.
Yeah, it's six years from when the ordinance comes into effect.
Right.
Right, okay.
Mr. Edgerton?
Well, I'm, other than Tom, I think I'm the only guy on the council that's lived out there. Other than Tom, I think I'm the only one on the council that lived on that rural area. I lived out there for 15 years. On two and a quarter acres, most of the people around me had five, some had 10. Shipping containers by some of the neighbors was considered blight. They didn't like it. And there was a fight between a couple of neighbors, and the city got involved, long before I was on the council, and they had to haul them off. The idea of kicking the can down the road six years, and allowing people to put in new containers, within this next six years, to me, smacks of, hell, why pass anything? Just leave it the way it is, if that's what you're going to do. But I'm opposed to the containers, but I'm also opposed to things that are retroactive, and coming in and jumping on people that have already been established. And I would simply prefer to say, look, if there, if there haven't been any complaints, and the person already has a container on their property, then they're grandfathered in, and there are no new containers allowed. And that's the way I would do it.
Did I, did I hear you say, just a second, did I hear you say that what you wanted to do is eliminate the six years?
Eight now, yeah.
Tom wanted to bring in one time, and I almost agreed with it, except we couldn't agree on, on the concept of LLCs and stuff. He wanted to say that it was grandfathered until you sold your property. In other words, only the time you owned it. Where we disagreed, I agreed with that, but where the disagreement was is, if you, if you, if you own that with your kids, then that could be 50, or 75, or 100 years. Or if you have it in a, in an estate, it could be forever.
I, I think, John, you're going into a miniscule, a miniscule situation. Okay? It doesn't even apply to me, but I don't know who else has an LLC.
Well, that's what he's saying. See, that.
Very few people have an LLC. I like what he's.
Here's my, here's my point. If we agree with you, that issue comes back up. In other words, if they grandfather it in, what you mean is, don't you, until they die?
Until they sell the property.
No, because it's attached to the property, so it's part of the property, and it runs with the property. It would be as though you were giving somebody who had a building that was higher than, than what the law would say now.
Yeah.
But it's considered a legal, a legal non-conforming use. That doesn't run with the owner. It runs with the property. So if they want to leave it on there, person can leave it on. The point is, it, to me, unless there's been complaints, you don't bother any of the people that have them now, you don't even have to consider six years. You just say, no new containers. That's it.
Mr. August?
I'm going to have to disagree with my friend, Mr. Edgerton. There are people who've been waiting through this moratorium that want to get a container, and I certainly want to give them every opportunity to go out and get a container and enjoy the same container that everybody else has a right to use for six years. And as far as getting rid of them, I think, I'd like to point out to Mr. Edgerton that we have gotten rid of them in six years. We're mean, we're giving people the time to make other arrangements, and maybe for another product to hit the market that's more aesthetic to the people. If people need this to run their property, and everybody else has one. Wait a minute. I was just waiting for Mr. Edgerton to be quiet. Then I think they should have the right to do it. And that, that's my point. And I don't think you should make those people pay. I don't think you should make those people pay the price just because they, they didn't get their container in time. And I'm going to, that's probably how I'm going to end up voting, whether I win or I lose. Thank you.
Mr. Furman, please continue for the last items.
We had 080. Okay. 080, I put that, just to note that SBC going containers, but since we have the definition of a medical shipping container, it would be written in 080. Okay. Now, we can discuss the six year, the six year deal. Okay. My feelings, okay? My feelings are, the people that do have them, it is an economic hardship for them to remove them. And especially, the ones that do the right thing. They put them in the backyard, they put them five foot from the back fence, they spend money to put landscaping around them, keep them concealed. They're back in the property, they're not, they're not visible from the street. And, and if you look at the switch, and I'll agree with the gentleman here, if you're taking a $4,000 storage container away from somebody, and they, they have to build, to replace it, they have to spend $12,000 to get a, an accessory structure, and, and pay for all the permits in the building, that's, that's almost an economic hardship of $15,000 or $16,000 that you're putting on, just because you won't allow the nice, real nice, the good shipping containers in the back of the property. I am for the people to have a shipping container, according to the stipulations here, and in the back of the property. And I don't want to create an economic hardship, so I agree that they should be, the ones that are here, no new ones, should be able to stay until the property is sold.
So you, you just, you just agreed with Mr. Edgerton, right?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just, just so that I understand where everybody.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Edgerton.
And just for the sake of, I just want to make sure that we are all tracking the same way. We're going to be giving these recommended changes to the planning commission.
Right.
And they could possibly change slightly, but it comes back to us.
Right.
So we don't, we don't need to get wrapped around the axle tonight.
Right.
We just need to get to a place where we're in agreement to send it to the planning commission.
Right. I think we, we gave some definite verbiage that they'll be able to work with a little bit better.
I, I just want to say that I don't agree, because it's not thought through, what's been said about the, when people move. It's just not been thought through. And, and if we're going to change it, then I want to submit to the planning commission that we just take away all containers in, within three months. That is one of the choices, too.
That's why it's going to the planning commission.
Okay. I'm, I say that we have some good compromises here, and yours hasn't been thought, you, you don't understand that if you just, if you turn your property into a trust, like my house is a living trust.
You don't qualify for a.
You don't, then you don't get a container. Oh, by the way, I can never get a container using your things. I don't have one now.
That's correct.
Well, anyway, I don't agree with that, and I don't.
You're the one that don't want any more containers.
Yeah.
Well, I am trying very, I am trying very desperately.
I'm trying to compromise.
No, you're not, you're, what you're doing is, is you're putting them, you're making things that are so difficult, that we're going to end up coming around and just allowing them to stay. And we're going to tell everybody, we're going to tell everybody, all you have to do, if you want your container, is to put it, put your property in a certain name, and it stays. And I'm, I'm not going to play the game. Do you do it, you do it, or you don't do it? Let's vote it up, let's vote it down.
Well, when you, when you talk about voting, and John, I think I made this suggestion to you, there's an election coming up next year. Why don't we put this item on the ballot? We can put it on the ballot. And I'll tell you what, I'll tell you what, Mr. Denver. If we put it on the ballot, and you prevail, or if I prevail, if I don't prevail, I'll pay, reimburse the city for the cost of putting it on the ballot. If you will agree, if you don't prevail, you'll pay for it.
No. You do realize it's about $65,000.
I know, I know, but hey, that's how, that's how committed I am, that it will pass.
Well, as a matter, as a matter of record now, Councilman Furman, are you telling us you can afford the $65,000?
Apparently so.
I'll, I'll give the, I'll give property to the city. I'll give an acre of ground instead.
All right, let's bring it, let's bring it back to the task at hand. Would you gentlemen agree to, for 090, removal of all metal shipping container paragraph, would you two agree to give the planning commission those two options? Six years as option A, or until property is sold, option B? Let them debate it.
Yes.
Because I, I have a, I mean, I don't disagree with either one of them, to be honest with you, but how do you, if we, if we let residents keep them until their property is sold, how do you regulate that? How do you, who's going to, who's going to be the container police, if, when the property is sold? I mean, that's really a cumbersome function.
Title company search.
Well, yeah, okay, so.
They have to do.
But at what point?
They, they know the ordinance is in California.
But how does code enforcement get into it, you know?
They don't have to, because the title search knows all the ordinances on every piece of property.
All right, that's an option.
And your title company will not pass it, or give a loan on it, if there's, if there's a violation of an ordinance.
Okay.
Title companies don't have these kinds of structures on there, unless it's all been permitted. Anything that's in the past has not been permitted.
That's a good point. Mr. August?
They will be permitted with this application process.
No, I think, I think, I think we can get, I see where this is going. I think we can get a consensus right now, because I agree with the six years and not complicating it with when the property is sold.
We agree.
And we can agree to that, I think.
Well, Mr. Edgerton and I do.
No, I don't, I don't agree with six years. And I, I think that all.
We're not talking.
It's kind of flaky, because it, it, in effect, you're going to have people buy it a year from now, two years from now, three years from now. You'll have crowds of people down here at the end of six years raising hell, because they don't want to get rid of their containers. And if you just say, hey, it's grandfathered in, if you got it now, and no new containers, it's going to take care of everybody.
The thing also, that where code enforcement can do their job, they make sure they're on the back of the property, and they're camouflaged and everything else, according to the ordinance, and they'll be, they'll look nice.
Well.
I would trade.
An equal argument could be made, under those, under those standards. We, how about we just enforce the ordinance? It's on the books. I mean, come on.
We'd move every single, every single person who spoke, we jerk their containers off right now. Here, I'll trade you this. Make the containers, make the containers look like an accessory structure. Put a roof on them, put sides on them, make it look, make it look like a regular ordinance. Have it, have it look like that, and they can have them on there for the next 10,000 years.
We give them a free permit? I think they said they should give them a free permit to do that.
The problem with that is, is that if we start doing that, and subsidizing certain things, then my favorite thing, we're going to subsidize, too, right? And so we can't, it has to be, let's drop the value, let's drop the price of all permits, or not just on one particular permit. permits or not just on one particular permit.
Okay, let's, uh, let's send two options to the Planning Commission if you would agree to do that, the six year option or the until sold option. Would you gentlemen agree to send that?
Well, the until sold says there are no new ones.
Yeah, correct.
Throw that into that.
Yeah, that should disappear.
What's, what's disappearing?
If, if you, if this Planning Commission proposes.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so, Mr. Furman, did you have any, thank you for that great work. Do you have any additional?
I think I.
Happy's to glads or whatever?
Think, uh, I think I covered everything I wanted to say.
I just have one minor one back, uh, back two pages under paragraph, under paragraph 030, paragraph G, uh, excuse me, uh, paragraph J, sorry, where it says metal shipping container shall not be longer than 53 feet in length.
There's 40.
There is no such thing.
There's no such thing, change that to 40, would you? Yes.
Yeah, 40 is the standard ISO shipping container.
Mr. Mayor, we did discuss that at the ad hoc meeting, and staff assured us that 53 foot, there is a 53 foot shipping container.
Let's let them change it to 40.
I think, I think we put it, to be perfectly honest with you, I think staff put it in, the previous staff put it in there for the Planning Commission because there's one person in the city that has a 53 foot container and it's a semi trailer, it's not even a shipping container.
Yeah, it was a truck trailer.
It's a truck trailer.
It was 53 feet.
Let's make it 40.
Let's make it 40.
Yeah, I agree, 40.
Okay. Council, do we have consensus to send the, the proposed changes, including everybody's input, to the Planning Commission?
Yep.
And we, I mean, it's coming back.
Point of, point of order, clarification. The one proposal essentially, which is modification, essentially it's John Denver's presentation, and that is that people who already have the containers are grandfathered in, um, and there will be no new containers.
Same.
Everybody must register their container. We have that in the ordinance, so we know, the city knows who has a container. If they're registered, they're here.
Mr. August?
No, I, I think I heard, Mr., what did you just say, Mr. Edgerton, about there are no new containers, is that what we're sending to the Planning Commission?
That's what he's saying, he says on both of them, no new containers.
On both of them, no new containers, well, can we go down the line here and see who agrees with that and who doesn't?
Well, we can send both of those options to the.
Both, as long as you send both of them to the.
Yeah, they can come back with a, and then we can, uh, vote when it comes back to us as we see fit.
Thank you.
Okay? Um, staff, do you need any, anything else from us? Do you have enough of clarity? Yeah, all right?
You, excuse me, you, this is clarity?
Write this, if I'm not clear on this.
They're shaking their heads and going, yeah. Well, okay, I mean, this has been a healthy debate for a very, very, very long time, and, uh, everybody's got differing opinions, to be sure. Uh, thank you very much for, uh, all your hard work, council, and, uh, staff on this issue, and we'll get it back before the Planning Commission one more time, and then bring it back to us. And I'll tell you what, you know what, if we can't agree after this work, then I would be supportive of a ballot measure as well. Put it to, I mean, you know what I'm saying? So let's, uh, well, we'll, we'll see how it goes, down the Planning Commission, back to us, and, uh, with all that being said, do you need anything else from us on this?
Not at this point.
And the moratorium that's currently in place stays in place until superseded by any further policy action?
That's correct.
Okay.
I do, I do want to make a, I do want to. Make a correction because the county passed an amendment in two, in January 6, 2003, at their, uh, they're at two and a half acres with the county, not five, John.
Okay.
Got it right here.
Well, we modified that.
Yeah, we did that.
So that's a good source reference?
Right.
Okay.
How come you can't get out of here at eight like I do?
Well, because you're all pushing your buttons. I mean, everybody wants to talk. No, all right, very good, on to city attorney report.
I have done my job today, and it's over.
Thank you very kindly, city manager report.
Yes, just two verbal updates. General plan, comes to Planning Commission next Tuesday.
Yay.
All the binders and information have been out, and we're following in on target right on schedule. We have applied for two different signs, uh, for Sun City. Uh, we applied for a historical signage for the freeway and for the green signage. Uh, the historical signage will take a little bit longer, we thought we'd dual track it, possibly get both or the one that we want. So, uh, tho- those are in with Caltrans, so great job for, uh, Public Works and Jonathan Smith's crew.